All rise.
I want to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Are there any visitor or public comments tonight? Next meeting of this board is February 5th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM. There'll be a Pension Committee meeting on Tuesday, February 5th at 4:00 PM. Doylestown Township Municipal Offices will be closed Monday, January 21st in observance of Martin Luther King Day. Gift of Life, give it one to the American Red Cross Blood Drive, January 25th, 2:30 to 7:30 PM here. You can register by contacting the township or the Red Cross directly, and drop-ins are welcome. If you're interested in getting township news, join our Google group. You'll get all kinds of email alerts, news when it happens. Go to website, DoylestownPA.org, sign up. All right, next item on the agenda, minutes approval for the reorganization meeting from January 7th.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments or changes? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. Correspondents, Pool Corner.
Yes, we've received a letter and Mr. Paternostro is here. I don't know if he wants to address it, but we did receive a letter, his concerns regarding the proposed park-and-ride lot and bike hike location for the Pool's Corner intersection, and he has some recommendations as to that he would like to see us move on, perhaps communicate with PennDOT to forego that lot in light of some other ideas.
Can we have our bike-and-hike and maybe Mr. John comment on these things before we move anything to PennDOT?
Absolutely. Bike-and-hike Committee did receive the letter and did go over it this morning. Mr. Kelso is here and Mr. Cellolo was at the meeting as well.
Are there recommendations?
I think the recommendation is to, Tom can, if I'm correct, but the recommendation would be to retain the park-and-ride lot. They feel that there are a number of, more the Class A cyclists who would utilize that lot for rides through Buckingham, through New Hope, and that is also part of the new bike plan that the county just recently adopted, are ways of getting to New Hope for cycling both on-road as well as off-road.
Were you able to solicit Buckingham's and Doylestown Borough's position on this?
No, I know at the time when it was done, they were in favor of the park-and-ride lot. I haven't heard from them. I can certainly be happy to share Mr. Paternostro's letter with them and see if they have any desire to change or talk to PennDOT in regards to modifying it in any way.
What does the amount, anybody have any comment on this? Thoughts? I would suggest that we collect everyone's input and then sit down with PennDOT. Okay? Thank you, Joe. Okay, Dog Park Advisory Committee application from Deborah McComas. We'll accept that application and appoint her. Is there a motion to appoint Ms. McComas?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Reports from the solicitor.
Nothing we won't discuss later in the agenda, Madam Chairperson.
Lieutenant?
Thank you very much. On December 17th, 2012, the township received a letter from Doylestown Borough Manager John Davis related to the proposed traffic calming project on North Street. The borough had planned to narrow the travel lanes and construct a dedicated parking spaces along the southbound lane. They also proposed a dedicated crosswalk across North Street onto the county park property located on North Street. As part of the project, the borough was requesting that the township post no parking restrictions along the northbound lane of North Street between East Street and Swamp Road. On January 3rd, Chief Logan, Stephanie Mason, and Dick John met with Dave Tomco and Matt Johnston of Panonian Associates to discuss the plans. A number of concerns with the plans were identified, including the width of the travel lanes, site distance, and drainage. On January 7th, Panonian Associates supplied the township with a written review of the project, which specifically addressed several issues with the plan. The review was forwarded to the borough through correspondence from the township manager. On January 9th, the Traffic Advisory Committee met and discussed the proposed plan. The Traffic Advisory Committee concurred with the concerns and recommendations outlined in the Panoni review.
Okay.
My recollection is that last time the borough did something like this, we were able to enter into an indemnification agreement. Now, I don't know, there's no speed humps in this particular one, is there?
No.
I don't know whether we would need something like that if the modifications are such that there's potential liability, but to get them to indemnify as they did the last time, and likely required New Britain Borough, but I'll leave that to the traffic engineers to whether or not they think there's a liability issue, but it seems to me that until they address the comments, it's premature to say yea or nay.
Okay.
I echo the lieutenant's comments and the chief even. Panoni did an excellent job, I thought, is our engineer. Did an excellent job on reviewing the paperwork and sending it back, so my understanding, it's back in the borough's hands with the Panoni letter that we provided them for their perusal.
All right, so we'll look at it again after we've had a chance to respond. Thank you. Anything else, Lieutenant?
No, there was none.
Thank you. Engineer?
Nothing at this time.
Manager?
I just have two things. First is, we have a police car that we would like to send to auction. That is a, the Tahoe 2919, and we have a note from Joe Nurse to send that off to the auction. It's January 26th, and it has been removed from service to date and is in poor condition.
Just looking for consensus, is that okay?
Yes.
Are you going to replace it?
It's already in the budget to be replaced, yes.
All right. Goodbye.
The second thing I have is just to keep the board informed, Doylestown Chem Fab Community Advisory Group meeting was last week. Dick John and myself attended. This document which you have, the recorded decision and report, tells everything about the chem fab site to date and what they are proposing to remove the contaminated soils on site and to replace it with clean soils. What happens next is that this information gets sent to the EPA National Priorities Review Panel. That will happen at the end of February in Washington, DC. The hope is, is that funding will be granted at that time through that committee for this project. Once that funding becomes available for the project, it should take about six months to clean up the site. The next phases EPA hopes to be able to take will be addressing the groundwater contamination from the site. Fortunately, our populated area around there, it has public water. Our concern is, is that plume continues to move in a westerly direction into the township, it will perhaps start to impact any non-on-site wells, so we want to hopefully nip that in the bud before that occurs. The last, they had a health official from the state at the meeting, and they did provide information on cancer rates. Fortunately for us in the 18901 area, our rates are about 16% less than the statewide rates in various categories, except for skin cancer, which happens to be higher. And I just wanted to provide that if anyone has any questions or would like to attend any of the meetings of the CAG, as they refer to it, and the next one is February 26th at 6:30, most likely at the borough.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Thanks, Stephanie. Supervisors, shall we start with you?
Sure, thank you. Good evening. The board will remember, they first looked at the first revision of this agreement between the Kids Castle Group and the township a couple months ago. At this time, we're not going to, rather not going to recommend a vote on it or a motion on it tonight, however, considering our council is working with their council on a few details regarding the maintenance and such, I would ask tonight if anybody has anything else to add or, you know, if there's any other...
I just have a, take a look at paragraphs three and seven and see if they're consistent.
The last draft is not, you're taking my draft or their draft?
Whatever I got in my package.
That's their draft, okay.
Just take a look at those two.
If there would be nothing else, or we have until the next, I think we'd like to shoot for the next township meeting in February if we can get this together to, you know, we'll see what we can do.
Okay.
Sean, just a quick question.
Yeah.
Eleven is, talks about the Friends becoming a 501(c)(3). Is that something that they're looking to do?
Yes.
Okay.
I have nothing else, thank you.
Tom?
No, at this time I have nothing, thank you.
Ryan?
I have nothing.
Good. Rick?
I'll pick up all the time that was yielded, if that's okay. The Park and Rec Board, and Sean was there, they really got a lot of things planned this year for Central Park. Sean mentioned Friends or Kids Castle, working on the Sensory Trail and the Game Grove, and a lot of good things you're going to see in Central Park. We would appreciate more volunteers. There's two openings right now on the Park and Rec, and no prior experience needed. Same with traffic, we could certainly use a couple of volunteers there. The bike-and-hike, I won't steal Tom's, Kelso's thunder, but I hope the rest of the board would support Tom in the bike-and-hike and continue what we're doing on the Shammany Greenway. It's just coming along great, and we're into phase two, and Tom will go through that, so I hope the rest of my supervisors will support that when Tom's done, you know, with a round of applause or something. And the EAC is working, as you know, we're Birdtown, and they're looking at putting a demonstration garden in Central Park, working with the Park and Rec Board, so it's a lot going on in Central Park this spring, and again, we need volunteers. It's very rewarding, as many in the audience are volunteers too, so I would appreciate getting in touch with Stephanie and say we'd like to help out. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, unfinished business. We have a new set of, a new proposal from Baker Engineering on their fees for 2013. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, I'm glad to see that they revised their fee structure. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. New business, the Shammany Greenway Trail update.
Mr. Kelso is here, Vice Chairman of the Bike-and-Hike Committee. Go ahead.
And I'm here both with Bike-and-Hike Committee and with the...
His committee, yes.
And we're going to be talking about two things and asking you specifically about the ones that you'd like to see worked in action on tonight. First, I want to give you an update of where we are on the trail along the Shammany Greenway, what's been done, and the dollars and cents of the season call too.
Tom, Sandra's going to come and help you.
We're keeping quiet.
And it didn't work.
Sometimes you have to point at that projector.
Oh, okay.
Put on the wire.
And then number two, we may want to see if the project is funded for Phase Two for the auction. And there are a couple other little things along the way too. If you recall, I was here, I think it was in June last year, and we went through a similar presentation talking about the Shammany Greenway. And this is probably the first initiative for the county too. They adopted the county-wide bike plan last week. They immediately started the study on the Shammany Greenway from Doylestown itself. It's a major, major effort, I think, and most of that land, a lot of the town is doing this on bike and on the local. So it's something you can do. And the portion through Sham, through the township is one of the most attractive for the county. Those of you that have walked that trail, that was Sean, Stephanie had her boots on, is that a number of times that this stuff has been part of the township. And with the Parkway, it opens up extension of, of the, we're actually using Parkway Trail as part of the Shammany Greenway. We got a problem. So we're using part of the Parkway as trail, and I just have a few other things I need to remind, remind. One thing we talked about Bike-and-Hike Committee with the Parkway Trail, that we'd like to, I don't think it needs formal approval by the board, but we'd like to approach PennDOT the same program they have for a Dr. Highway, for litter control. The Bike-and-Hike Committee has offered to do that for the section through Doylestown Township, for the trail. And if any of you have been out there already, we need to do it already. It just happens. And I don't think PennDOT has a formal program yet for the trail. Stephanie, I think you have been approached them, but we'd like to do that towards the county.
Sure.
I think it's a positive thing to do for the trail. We think the trail is a positive, will have a positive effect on the township.
You all agree?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And it's no cost to the township, so.
Just the whole trail or just the section through the township?
Well, we're talking about New Britain Road to Bristol Road.
I didn't know if it was beyond that, okay.
In the township.
Right.
And we have other communities, people on the trail, or on the community from other communities will participate in that too. A few times...
We'll start it.
I think if we start now, it's...
Yeah, and everyone else will pick up.
Yeah. I think it's something that would work. And the intersection of the Parkway and the Shammany Greenway is critical regionally too, and it's something, there's an initiative by the Bicycle Coalition of Greater Philadelphia called Completing the Circuit, and both of these trails are part of that. And it's a nonprofit group, and it's something I'd like to request. We've talked about the, approached this group, they've approached us about becoming part of it. There's no fees involved in it, but we would become part of that coalition. Montgomery County is part of it, Bucks County is part of it. We think there are benefits there for the township, future funding, and coordinating programs.
Yeah.
It seems to be a worthwhile group, so we'd like to become part of that if that's something that we want to allow us to do.
I support that.
Yeah, I don't, we don't need to vote on that, I think, but I think you got it.
They gave them a consensus, so.
Yeah, I think you're getting that.
I think that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, go ahead.
Since there are no fees involved, and if there's something that you find you don't like about it at some point, we can drop out of it.
Information sharing's good.
But I think this is, this is such a critical part of that, that when you look at their maps and everything, if you have a picture, this just shows up, shows up as being one of those areas that's important. And it's, we talked about this before, it's all about what we're doing, the right to connect connections, connecting separate rail stations, connecting neighborhoods through this 20 miles of trail that we have. We approached this in a phased way, we had three phases. I'll go through those if you don't see them, but the first phase was the area right around here, and there were a number of components there. Number one, the biggest component was extending the existing trail line to Shammany, up to Lower State Road through the property. That's just been escrow, so as far as we're concerned, it'll get done. Developers going to do the entirety of that trail, and they've started work out there on the trail. So that's a big component there. We have the work that was done this summer on Wells Road, which built a bridge. Yeah, that's what he does, so I think that is the second or third bridge that he built this year, and the connecting path that PennDOT did, and that was one of them. The other component was just connecting the 202 Parkway path to the destination of Doylestown, which is here, college, PennDOT to Daphors. We've got a few remaining items to do. We've got a kiosk, the intersection of the trail, which is in the main, the kiosk with maps and directional information. And we wanted to do a small rest area, picnic area at the top of the hill above what was really there. This is a destination, it's a beautiful area. We went up and looked at it, this fall, for the Parkway open. And that will really complete the route. Phase two is the section from the Parkway Trail and the Shammany Greenway, upper State Road, and that's through Delval College, probably, and the Chalfont, New Britain, wastewater treatment, Chalfont, New Britain, wastewater port is probably. That's what we want to talk about for the Chalfont. And then Phase three is beyond that, way up to the second train station, New Britain, and extending it all the way up to Chalfont. Right now, Chalfont Borough is taking the lead on that. They're putting together an application for the, through the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Mission, and we're working with them, but most of that is outside of the township. But they've been cooperating in this, working with them on the grant for that.
Good.
And that's long-term. That'll probably be multiple phases, even then, it's a big, a big effort to do that section of the trail. Phase one fund, the William Penn Foundation grant was for $130,000. We received $76,000 of that as of just today or yesterday, for work that's done, and that covered the Wells Road Bridge and all of those things, the Delval Connection, all those things that I went through. What hasn't been done, as I mentioned, was the kiosk, the rest area. We'd like to purchase a counter, a device to count the number of people using the trail. It's not a big expense or anything, but it's something we think we could take your grant money, just to help us identify priorities and use of trails throughout the township. And then we need to do the final design of that portion of the trail. That, we have, that'll give us about $43,000 to finish that up. I think that's more than enough. And then we want to use the $1,000 of that money to finish the actual design of Phase two. What happened in Phase one, we had so many other people doing the work for us that we didn't need the entirety of that amount, and PPRPC, who manages, manages this grant for the William Penn Foundation, allowed us to use a significant portion of that to design the state. And that's for a baker, and that's why we're asking for that extension to their contract, $10,000, seventy-five.
Yeah, that's correct.
To finish that work. So at the end of that, we should, when we finish spending the William Penn Foundation on this, this year, probably by before December, when we completed Phase one, we'll have Phase two designed and funded, ready for construction.
Okay.
That's where we, that's sort of where we think we are today.
Okay.
Phase two, what we're requesting, and this is a request that came from the Open Space Committee and Bike-and-Hike Committee's grant, is to use some of the county's Open Space money, now that here to reduce about half of that for the construction of Phase two. And that's a 75%, 25% for that. We still have to come up with 25% if we need to do it. And I think this year in the budget is $200,000 for that, if we have matching grants. The conditions, I think, you've probably placed on that, that approval of the budget. So we're looking at the total cost of that being around $413,000. So again, we would be requesting use of the township's allocation from the county's Open Space money and about $103,000 out of the budget to match.
Now, a lot of that work, we've been going on that, and breaking down how that'll actually happen, I think there's a lot of work that will be done in house that we might be able to count towards match on that even. So that's where we are with Phase two. We think we can get to construction and complete construction of Phase two this year, which again would take us from the 202 Parkway Trail to Upper State Road. And then as soon as they finish, the developer finishes, the portion on the Nieman Track, we'll have it from the township building to Upper State Road.
Was it, was the recommendation of Open Space Board that, that 300?
Yes.
All of that be allocated to this?
There's a total of 620,000 of money allocated from the county to the township for Open Space.
Right, that's more, the 300 is more in my recollection than what I thought you guys were talking about.
Well, when I was back here in June, when I was in front of you in June, we had talked a number roughly about 200,000. We had gone to the county's Open Space Advisory Board at that point because we needed a waiver. Right now, the Open Space Guidelines say you can use this money for parks, facilities, on property that you own in fee. We don't own this right-of-way that we've acquired from Delval and are acquiring from the sewer authority in fee. It's an easement. And the Advisory Board for the county agreed with us that that's a reasonable request. It's a, you know, it's a major initiative on their part about the Shammany Greenway. And that's what we asked for at that time. Since that time, we've refined the cost, we've looked at other open space opportunities, and I think the overall recommendation from the Advisory Committee was to use the other half for the sensory trail and improvements within the park.
I must have missed that meeting.
So that's the one request we have in front of you tonight, is to allow us to move ahead with that. What, what the next steps are, the next steps are to complete the Phase one and design permitting of Phase two, as I said. To finalize the easement with Chalfont, New Britain, Joint Sewer Authority, which we think we're there. I think we just have to have the attachments to the documents and finalize that. And then submit the formal request to the county to use the open space funds. We have to go to the, back to the committee, I guess, and then on to the county commissioners to formalize that. And it's a very favorable grant program for this type of project. I think Stephanie just let me know today that we'll get our share, we'll get 75% of the township's share.
Right, and 25% of...
Initially, right off the bat, and then the final 25% of their money upon completion. It doesn't get any better than that with grants, usually. And that's really where we are with it. So there are a number of things. We've got the request for Baker's contract extension or expansion of $10,000, and we've got the request to approach the county formally to use that amount of money for the construction of Phase two.
I certainly support it, as I mentioned, it's a continuation of Phase one into Phase two and into Phase three, and my understanding is the reason the county, I mean, we are one of the jewels of the county, and they're, you know, looking at what we've done here, so they're much more amenable to giving us, working with us as far as developing these trails. So, I mean, I, I'll turn it over if anybody has any questions, but I think this is the direction to go, and I support the funding request.
Ryan, do you have any thoughts?
No, not at this time.
Oh, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to, I...
I know, this is the first time you're hearing this.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, yeah.
I think the discussion on the Open Space Committee is that, in terms of open space, one thing people have been asking for is to be able to see it and touch it and be, you know...
Be in it.
Be in it. And this really gives us an opportunity to do that without really acquiring any open space. You don't get the feeling of being in open space anywhere else in the township more than that area. I mean, it's just pristine almost back through there, and unique in terms of the wetlands and wildlife.
I'd say, I'd agree. I mean, I've walked the, I've walked the space, I mean, it's beautiful back there.
Yeah, it's surprising.
And I do have a question regarding the 25%, maybe I should be asking the board, if you recall, the township match for, or Stephanie, the 25%. You, Tom, you indicated that part of that could be obtained through time or service, or exactly where those...
Well, we'll have to look at that with the county. We're sort of feeling our way through this project with the county because we haven't used it for this purpose before, and I think Stephanie has begun those conversations. And I think Stephanie has begun those conversations with the staff. And my recollection is that we, they will allow us to do that.
Yes, they will. And we, as the board will recall, as we were going through the budget process and talked about having money, and Dick will know we have money for the Nishamni Greenway in the budget, assuming that there's grant money to support it. Now, maybe some of these numbers can be further refined and brought down. This is probably at the max level. I know when we were at Open Space, I think Barbara recalls, we started talking about 200,000, which is where we were. And, you know, because I think we were hoping we would have other maybe open space opportunities. And, you know, kind of focusing now more on the Nishamni Greenway, you know, it's going to probably take a little bit more to do that. Obviously, we're always looking for other grant opportunities as well to put towards this and we'll continue to do that. But I think, you know, as Dick gets his hands wrapped around the project a little bit more from construction standpoint, that 300 may come down, but I think is that probably our max at this point?
That's what we tried to present. We asked Baker to work up a cost estimate. That number's a little bit above their estimate even. And they estimated based on going out to bid under Pendott spec, under Pendott standards.
Loans, yeah.
We think we can bring that number down. We're working on it right now with the wetland crossings. But there are other opportunities out there. There's, in terms of moving over to Cedar, is it Cedar Crest Farms?
Yeah, and there's problems there with the residents and access and stuff, and, and that may be a little bit more difficult.
But we, we think it's a reasonable budget for this project at this point.
What's the, what's the number, Tom?
The, the number was.
Three ten?
Whoops, I missed it there. It was 400, it was 310,00204. And it's that way because that's half of the Open Space money, money from the county. The total project we're estimating to be about 413,000.
And the additional is coming from other grant sources in our capital fund?
Well, we have money, we had 200,000 in the capital fund for this project, assuming we would get.
For this project alone?
Yeah, for this project.
And we don't expect to use that.
Yeah, and hopefully that'll be even less.
Okay.
All right. The, there are two motions then I think we need to entertain. One, to approve the supplemental contract to Baker in the amount of $10,000. Is there a motion?
Shall I move?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
The second motion is to authorize Doylestown Township to entertain discussions with the county in authorizing up to 310,204 dollars of open space money towards the Nishamni Greenway Trail.
I'll move for that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Can I state that accurately?
This motion's for the.
For county morning.
Authorizing the township, make a formal request.
Request, okay.
Understand the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
And good to go?
Thank you very much. Look forward to it. Should be a good year for us, I think.
You guys done a great job and I'm sure you're doing great.
I'm just amazed at what they've done and how much money they save on the township and not going out to bid on the preliminary. So that's money boss to have.
Thank you very much for all your work. Our shared-use path crossing agreement is the next item on the agenda and we need to pass this resolution. You had the opportunity to see the pass crossing agreement? Yes?
And that picks up on what Tom was saying because this is our connection to the 202 Parkway Trail. And we have to have this in order to bring in the White Eagle Labs Trail and for us to take on to the Nishamni Greenway Trail as well, so.
All right, so. So this resolution authorizes the chairman to enter into the agreement with Pendott on the shared-use path crossing.
Shows that you sign, they have this thing every time you sign something.
Yes. Yep. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll move.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second, first, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, regional household hazardous waste collection program.
Something we've been participating in for many, many years since 2000. We have a very good support system there in getting rid of household hazardous waste. And they're actually, the commitment this year's actually been lowered by 10%. Our commitment over the next three-year period will be 2005, 20113. And would recommend that we continue to participate in that county household hazardous waste program.
Is there a motion?
Shall I move?
Second?
I'll second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Emergency operations update? Thank you. Mr. Fowlesbury, good job. Is there a motion to pass resolution number 1665?
Shall I move?
Is there a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 1665 is passed. Electricity procurement, insulation, energy.
We would recommend that we go with the municipal utility alliance, which was put together through the Pennsylvania Municipal League for our energy, electrical energy sources this year. We have to lock in the rate on, which is actually tomorrow. We've been checking the rate several times. MUA continues to be lower than Direct Energy, who we were with the last two years. And we, we have to lock it in before 5:00. So we have to lock it in tomorrow morning. And we need one of the members to be authorized to come in and sign after the price is locked in.
I'll make, make a motion.
Any member?
Any member, if that's okay with the board?
So the board's going to approve the agreement with Constellation and also authorize any member of the board to execute the confirmation of rates tomorrow morning on behalf of the township.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I just want, you know, we, we've been working, we, the staff's been working real hard on, on, on cutting back on the electricity. How much ballpark have we saved since we took this initiative on?
Oh, go ahead, Xander. It's about $3,000.
Ballpark in the $3,000 to $4,000 range total. So it's something, yeah. It's not huge.
It's a savings.
It's a savings.
Okay.
One mailing of the newsletter. All right, is that one of you?
And then we have the lawn bid.
Lawn maintenance bid, sir. Motion to approve.
Shall I move?
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, is there a second?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Dick. 2013 equipment with operators rental bid. Is there a motion to approve?
Shall I move?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, land development. Pavilion at Furlong, they're asking for, or we're giving them an extension to.
They're actually granting you an extension, but by way of background, I think Mr. Murphy advised me they should be ready to meet with the board either in late February or March with a new plan, a new sketch plan. So hopefully this will be the last extension on this particular plan.
Do we have to prove this?
Yes, it's proven extension.
Is there a motion to approve the extension? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Shellborn.
The next item is before you, the Shellborn Healthcare Development Group's application to develop tax parcel 9-14-30 into 79,300 square foot, three-story assisted living facility with associated driveways, parking and stormwater facilities. Plan was prepared by Gilmore and Associates, was dated October 2, 2012, and was last revised December 21, 2012. Plan was recommended for approval by your planning commission, subject to conditions. I think that Mr. Zadlo has called and he asked if we would consider recommending to the board preliminary final. And Stephanie and I and Mario have discussed it and realized there's not many open issues, so we certainly would have no objection in recommending if you're inclined to approve it, if you approve as a preliminary final. And I have a series of conditions, but obviously you might want to explain a little bit to the public and to the board what you're proposing. I'm not suggesting you spend the next 25 minutes, you know, stowing the virtues of what you're doing, but at least give some explanation of what it's about.
We've been here so many times, it almost seems like everybody should know what it is. But we, we are, our project is for what is generally known as the AAA site. It's an assisted living facility right on 611. We have the landscape plan up. We are using the existing driveway. We're, the building is shown on the plan. We have our civil engineer here who could answer any questions related to engineering. I would like to note that we, we have all of the latest letters from your reviewers and our response to all of it is we'll comply. We have no issue with anything that's been noted and we will revise the plans to meet all of those review comments. And in addition, we have met with the neighbors, we have walked the site with the neighbors, and we have forwarded three of five signed agreements with the neighbors. There were nine points, nine concerns that they raised, and we've responded to all nine of those concerns, and they have accepted our response to all nine of those concerns. Tonight, I received the last two, and so we, we have had great cooperation with the And really, I think everybody may be happy to have this site settled and gone.
If I may, I have obviously a series of conditions. And one I might want to discuss with the board is that they're asking for a waiver with respect to replacement of trees because there's only so many trees can be replaced. And it's been recommended that you consider whether you want to accept a fee in lieu of some of the trees. I think there's 68 they can't replace, whether you want any of those trees for your park or if you don't care, or you want, I need some direction on that issue.
Do we need trees?
Yes.
Dick will take.
Yes.
Dick will take trees.
We'll take the trees.
Trees or fee in lieu of trees, Richard? Fee, yeah, trees or both combinations?
Or is there, it's whatever you prefer.
I would prefer to present a cost, 68 trees.
Well, I, I might note that in, in meeting the needs of the neighbors, maybe that number's going to come down because we've added some trees. So we, we would agree with whatever the actual number is.
Net of what you're providing the neighbors.
Pardon me?
Net of what you're providing the neighbors.
Correct.
So I think that's reasonable?
Yes.
Okay. With that in mind, I think I can, can frame for your consideration and Mr. Zadlo's concurrence or lack thereof, the appropriate conditions of approval. Compliance with the Boucher and James report dated January 9, 2013, with the understanding that you will be granting the following waivers. From the provisions of Section 15334(c)(2) and Section 15334(c)(5), to permit the disturbance of certain caliper inches of existing trees, with understanding that 97 are to be replaced on the plan, additional will be replaced in accordance with the agreement with the neighbors, the balance to be provided as a fee in lieu of the township. From the provisions of Section 15334(c)(5)(b)(4)(a)(3), so as to relieve the obligation to have the flowering trees two and a half inches in caliper. Next, compliance with the Pickering Courts and Somerset Report dated January 4, 2013, with a grant of the waiver with respect to showing facilities within 400 feet as they have provided in aerial in lieu thereof. Compliance with Pennington Associates Report dated November 16, 2012. Compliance with the SC Engineers Review Letter dated November 16, 2012. Compliance with the Michael Baker Junior Inc. Review Letter dated November 16, 2012. Compliance with the Doylestown Township EAC Report dated November 14, 2012. Compliance with Bucks County Planning Commission Report dated November 7, 2012. Compliance with the review letter from the Director of Code Enforcement for the Township dated October 16, 2012. That the agreement between the neighbors and the applicant be incorporated into the final plans for approval by the board as far as the execution of the plans for recording. Those agreements be, being set forth in a letter from January, dated January 10, from Mr. Zadlo to the neighbors that are noted thereon. Applicant to provide a bus shelter once it's resolved as far as the location and the concurrence with SEPTA that a bus stop be placed. Next, receipt of all permits, improvement of agencies having jurisdiction, including Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, DTMA, Conservation District and Pendott. Applicant to contribute an off-site traffic fee of 25 cents per square foot of gross floor area, which will be paid at the time of the building permits issuance. And lastly, the execution of our financial security agreements. Mr. Zadlo, do you approve those conditions?
I do, sir.
I'll make a motion. We approve this with the conditions set forth by our solicitor.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
All right. Questions or comments? Any consideration from the folks out there? Yes. Bill Laire, go to the microphone and identify yourself. Now, identify yourself.
My name is Bill Laire. I live in Puncro Hollow Drive. I don't want to be the spokesperson for the group, it probably should be Mrs. Long. But I have to tell you, working with this organization over the last number of months, it's been great. I mean, if all developers were this nice to work with and what they agreed to do for us as neighbors, if everybody was like that, it would be a great township for everybody. But I want to commend Mr. Zadlo and also Dave Ennis for the work that they did in including all the neighbors on Puncro Hollow. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
I would echo that. I mean, I've been on planning, reviewing plans for 13 years under the tutelage of Mr. Kelso, and I think he'll agree, cooperation is a two-way street, and you get cooperation when you give cooperation. And this was, this was, this was nice. So we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And it does wrap up this site.
Thank you.
I mean, this part of the point, you have lots on.
Yes.
There were a lot of risks at this site.
There were.
I think this is a significant step forward.
Thank you. All right, there's a motion and a second. Anybody else have any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
The next action would be to approve the planning module so they can proceed to get DEP approval of the sewer facilities.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you. And that was preliminary final.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good luck with your construction.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's something.
Treasurers' report for January 15, 2013. Is there a motion to approve?
Shall I move?
Wait, we got a memo from.
He just explains that the treasurer's report and the bills list are both being put through the new software system, so it's a little bit different.
Why it looked different?
Yeah, it's why it looked different.
All right, thank you. Is there, there's a motion, is there a second?
A second.
The treasurer's report, all in favor?
Aye.
And the bills list for both December 26 and January 15.
Move for approval for both.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second approval on both. All in favor?
Aye.
Next meeting of this board is Tuesday, February 5, 7:00 PM. What happened, everybody? Good night. There will be a pension committee meeting on February 5, beginning at 4:00 PM here. We're going to be closed on Monday, January 21st in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. The American Red Cross is hosting a blood drive here at the Township Building, January 25th, 2:30 to 7:30. Walk-ins are welcome. You can sign up through the Township or directly with the Red Cross. And if you want township news, email alerts, join our Google group, going to DoylestownPA.org. We are adjourned.[1742.31]